Speaker, Senator Palacios, Senator Ogun. So, we still have five more bills to go and I need our colleagues to come in this morning. Sergeant Arms, please make the phone calls. Thank you. Buenos, the legislature is called to order. I know we're supposed to start at nine and we are at 10:00 AM. We don't want to revert back to 10:00 again, so can you please make sure we're here? We do have Senator Panglinen, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Palacios, Senator Ada, Senator Frank Ogun, Senator Telo Titegui, Senator Espoletan. Okay, so I would like to recognize the first author of Bill Number 195. Senator Panglinen, you recognize?
Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker. Buenos, dan, manana sidos parago, dan tolima gatsong tangi ni paga no Ogun. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 195-30COR substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services and Judiciary be placed in the third reading file.
So, you would like to speak?
Yes.
Okay, please stand for me.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 195 proposes to repeal and reenact a section of the law relative to the use of the proceeds of the sale of the bonds that is financing the construction and closure of the Ordot Dump and the construction of the Lazon landfill. As you know, Madam Speaker, this body, because of the consent decree requirements, proceeded with financing and going on into the bond market for the construction of the Lazon landfill pursuant to the consent decree that was signed by the governor, obligating the government of Guam to construct a new landfill and to close Ordot. And so, this body went out and authorized the floating of bonds in the amount of $202 million. When we passed the legislation that authorized the bonds, we delineated what this $202 million can be used for. And because, for example, the government of Guam, prior to floating the bonds and because of the consent decree requirements, had to use some general fund monies to move forward on the consent decree projects. If you remember, we had to set aside general fund revenues, for example. Remember the Million Dollar Mondays, in which every Monday, the government of Guam had to deposit a million dollars into the account at the district court to move forward the construction of the landfill. So, when we floated the $200 million bond, we reimbursed the general fund for that because we were funding all of the development activities related to the closure. And then, of course, we have the construction of the landfill itself that is ongoing right now. And then, eventually, when the new landfill is open, we will begin the closure of the Ordot landfill itself, or the Ordot Dump. And as we move forward on this, we looked at the Ordot situation and the need to, once again, resolve the closure of the Ordot Dump when the new landfill opens. And one of the issues that have long remained outstanding with the Ordot Dump is that, when, of course, it got first built, it was really a military dump. And the military, then, because they were in charge of the island after the war, chose that site and used that site continually as the dump site. And so, they brought all of the remnants of the war and the cleanup of the war and the destruction over to that dump site and began using it as a dump. Then, of course, when the Organic Act was passed and we transitioned to a military governor with a government of Guam existing, the property was turned over to the government of Guam to be used and we continued to use it as a dump. And then, of course, over the years, we've continually expanded dump until today, in which we see what it has become over the last 50-some years of being used as a dump. And so, the government continually, whenever it needed to more space, it just took more land. Well, now, we know, and has been verified by Department of Land Management documents and Department of Public Works ass build drawings, that over these years, when we've, kind of, every time we needed more space, we took space next to the dump, that we started taking property and putting the trash on property that was not government of Guam property. That was private lands that was never been condemned by the government and never condemned by either the US government or the local government for the purpose of using it as a dump. And so, what, this was brought to the, this matter was brought to my attention and we began the process of researching the records and working with the receiver in getting him to understand exactly what it was going to be required in terms of land acquisition when we close Ordot. And the receiver has agreed, Madam Speaker, that as part of the pre-closure activities of Ordot, because not only constructing the new dump now, but we are already planning the closure of Ordot. And so, one of the pre-closure activities is that we're going to do the surveys. They're going to do some baseline environmental work and these RFPs have gone out. And so, part of this RFP process is the survey of the property, the development of ass builds in terms of the actual site occupied by the dump, some preliminary analysis of how much property they'll need to take in order to, as a buffer, for example. So, we now know that these acquisitions of existing site already needs to be accounted for. And the family that has stepped forward, because they've dealt with the government of Guam in the past trying to resolve this matter, has come forward. And again, we've been working with them and we've verified, once again, through land records, that in fact, current site of the dump of about maybe 40, 50 acres is actually private lands that has never been condemned. And so, what this bill does is that, when we said, here's 200 million, for example, 20 million you reimburse the government, 40 million will be construction of the first cell, another 40 for the second cell, we're reserving 40 million for the closure of Ordot. We are now saying that of the proceeds of the bond, that we will reserve, on page three is where you'll see it, subsection B, that up to $3 million for compensation for the acquisition of private property used for the Ordot landfill by an instrumentality or agency of the government of Guam. So, this is the only language that's being added to the use of the proceeds. So, we're not using the proceeds for other purpose, but the original intent of closing Ordot, opening the new landfill and closing Ordot. And this will then ensure that when we move forward, that there is money set aside to compensate the landowners for the property that has been already, already, over all these years, have been used by the government of Guam to put our trash and the trash of the island there. So, this is the, it's fairly simple in that it reserves $3 million of the bond proceeds to compensate these families. And of course, all of the documents will come when the final taking occurs or the negotiation occurs. It can either happen through land condemnation, that's one avenue of going about it. And we really, you know, for me, I would prefer that we don't go that way. We've already taken the land, we don't need to go to court and condemn it. We should just enter into negotiations with this family, arrive at a fair and equitable compensation to them and basically just purchase the property. And so, again, I must emphasize that the receiver has, to his credit, and I certain, and based upon a request I made to him, will ensure that at the front end of Ordot, so that we don't have to wait another three years to resolve this thing. We can actually make a determination after we do the pre-closure work that's happening now or will be happening now and move forward. And we now know that the money, that is the cash in the bank, that is with the trustee, that $3 million of that will be set aside to compensate for these families when we actually fulfill or put a, close the chapter on the acquisition of the property that is already a dump with these families, because that's what the government has done to them and has taken their property. So, it just adds that as an allowable use and sets aside and reserves the proceeds. There's more than enough money in terms of the construction and the closure because as we, as you know, Madam Speaker, it probably in the briefing that was given to you by Senator Ada on the report of receiver a couple of days ago, that we are actually running, I think, $20 million under projected expenses based upon the bids that we've gotten. So, reserving this money is not going to jeopardize our compliance with the consent decree because the proceeds are enough to open the new landfill and we will then move forward. And we're estimating that 40 million may be needed for the closure of Ordot and that $3 million will be made available for the compensation of this family whose property has already been taken by this government without due compensation and just compensation. And this will ensure that we cure that injustice that this government has inflicted upon this family. And so, we'll continue to, we do this, we continue to move forward, to work with the receiver, the courts and the different agencies. And hopefully, these families will be made whole with regards to their property. Thank you very much, Sidoos Massey.
Bueno, Pobeto, Speaker Panglinen. We have Senator Ogun next to speak, Speaker Wampat, Senator Telo and then Vice Speaker.
Buenos, an of a day, Madam Speaker, Sidoos Massey. To go far, Madam Speaker, si, si, senador gi, si, masi ga gi, manila, la, ya, kana bright, dan gen tomorrow gyal, ni sitan kwentis, gi fina tomorrow finen na, dos minutos antes de, un tutun gi, fino English. Pues esta, esta, o, o, gino, esta, esta, manazan, i, i, zoku dos minutos, pues, ya, u, transferagi, English. So, I hope that, Madam Speaker, I just said to, for the information of the public that I was asked or instructed or directed by one of our very good colleagues from the village of Manila, that if, in fact, we get up to speak on any particular legislation, that we really should initiate some of our statements in tomorrow. So, I believe that I've already exceeded that two-minute timeframe.
Conceivable.
And if, if by any chance, his translation of two minutes does not coincide with mine, then we have some differences in regards to that. But, just for the sake of Bill Number 195, I want to thank the good speaker before and the sponsor of this measure because this, there were, there have been a number of families that have brought these issues. I believe that they also paid your office a visit in addition to the sponsor of this legislation, in addition to the speaker of the legislature and perhaps, in addition to my office and perhaps a number of the other senators who are in the halls. And in this case, the sponsor of the legislation had highlighted the nature of what is being proposed here. What would take place is that the amendment to the existing law in the allocation of any of the proceeds for the closure of the Ordot Dump and the opening of the Lazon landfill, that the initial process for closure of Ordot Dump would allocate or extract $3 million from the bond proceeds to ensure that we deal with addressing this perennial issue. And I say perennial because, looking at the committee report, there was one particular family member that stated, "We've waited for such a long time, in excess of 30 years, and we still pay property taxes." And this is one particular family that had brought this issue to the attention of members of this body, Madam Speaker. And when you look at, or you listen intently to the sponsor of the legislation, he's absolutely right. Whenever Ordot Dump needed additional space, what the government had done, has done in the past, I guess, 18 to 20 to 30 years in this particular case, because the family member had highlighted that over the last 30 years, that their property had been utilized for the extension and the expansion of the Ordot Dump facility. Well, here is a situation where the government of Guam rightfully should address this issue and put a closure to either acquiring the property through outright purchase from the family members or trying to work out other land exchange arrangements. Well, you know, Madam Speaker, we know that the land bank is very restricted or very limited in terms of any excess property out there that is owned by the government of Guam, in which we can exchange from property to property. And that's what makes it somewhat difficult. Some of the family members were asked during the course of the discussion in my office whether they would consider a land swap. And a number of them said, because many of their family members have already reached a ripe old age, that they would prefer to look at outright financial compensation. And this was, if you take a look at the bill number, it's 195 and it was introduced, obviously, we're up to 455, if I'm not mistaken, or in the 400 sequence of bills introduced by members of this body. So, it shares with us that, in fact, this was legislation that was introduced somewhat the latter part of August or September of last year. So, Madam Speaker, to ensure that, as the government of Guam, whether it be through the receiver, moves in the direction of closing the Ordot Dump, there's one particular obligation, because the bond proceeds are being used specifically to address and ultimately close the Ordot Dump, there's one situation that should be addressed immediately upfront. And that's exactly what this legislation does in terms of allocating up to $3 million to be able to negotiate and purchase the properties of private landowners that have been utilized without permission, of which many of these private landowners continue to pay their own taxes that are due to, land taxes that are due to the government of Guam. So, I stand in full support of this legislation, recognizing that, at least, here is another situation where the government of Guam, within a reasonable timeframe of a year and a half to two years, I understand that the receiver had highlighted that the closure of the Ordot Dump could conceivably take anywhere from three to four years because of the nature of the capping and the requirement in terms of eventually closing that facility and leaving it for the community to use for other purposes, that at the onset, before many of these activities take place, that at least the families are able to sit down with government of Guam representatives or even with the receiver and see what can be done to be able to ensure that justice takes place and they're properly compensated for properties that many of their children and many of them have not been able to use only because the government of Guam has encroached onto their property line for the use of the expansion of the Ordot Dump. So, you look at it from that perspective, Madam Speaker, I think it bodes very well that at least here is another land issue that the government of Guam will be putting to a close over the course of the next year and a half, two years, hopefully, if not any sooner, and at least allow these families to understand it, to acknowledge that the government is owning up to its obligation and paying them appropriately based on any discussions in terms of being able to use the proceeds of the bonds and pay for the purchase of these properties. So, Madam Speaker, I stand in support of this and I thank the sponsor for initiating this because I know that there have been other legislations introduced that would have also addressed this particular issue. But I'm very pleased to stand here in support of this, recognizing that of the myriad of land issues that remain outstanding, that the government of Guam really needs to put on the table and recognize that we need to put a closure to, eventually, down the road, that at least at the end of the day, in about a year, year and a half, that these families would have a closure to their land issue and that we can deal with other situations accordingly. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, Sidoos Massey.
Bueno, Pobeto, Senator Ogun. Next up, Speaker Wampat. We'll go ahead and move forward. Senator Titegui, do you wish to speak on the main bill?
Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker. You know, I was at this, the public hearing in regards to Bill 195 and seeing that there's been much change in the substituted bill regarding it. But one of the concerns that I had was the value in which was stated here. I thought it was actually at $2 million when it first came out. And if, I'd like the author, if he would yield to a question regarding that money, that figure that came out to $3 million and how that was assessed to be the value of the property.
Thank you, Senator Tite. Speaker Ben, would you like to yield?
Yes, thank you very much. The $2 million, $2.5 million was an estimate that was given at the public hearing based upon, I guess, just what has occurred with regards to the transactions in the real estate market. So, there was no appraisal done, there was no, any kind of assessment done. And then, the, so, in order to ensure that we reserve enough money, the properties, because we reserve three, doesn't mean three's going to be paid. In the, either in a condemnation process or in a negotiation process, you're going to have to determine and get appraisals and, of course, arrive at a value. If it's on a condemnation process, then it's going to be, the court will set the price based upon fair market value, based upon, what do you call it? Appraisals that will be ordered by the court. If it's on a negotiation process, it's the same. It's going to have to be, the government's going to decide for what they think is a fair price. The landowners are going to decide, they're going to meet, they're going to negotiate and they're going to agree. So, in order to ensure that we reserve enough money, $2 million may be the low end and so forth. So, we just say it's up to $3 million will be reserved. And the final number could be below, if we go and do all the appraisals and the properties are appraised at a million, then, you know, that's the way that it will be compensated. The $2 million, like I said, was estimated based upon some transactions that occurred in the general area and it could be lower or higher than that. So, when we say up to three, it just means that we're playing it safe. Up to three will be reserved, it doesn't mean $3 million is the price of the property.
Madam Speaker, then, one small question, then, again, is the...
Please state your question.
Is the appraisal, you know, who has the responsibility? Is it the government of Guam to do the appraisal or is it the property owners to do the appraisal?
Speaker Ben, can you answer?
And will that cost be covered within that $3 million?
All of the costs, if the government's going to condemn the property through a condemnation process, then the government pays for the appraisal.
Okay.
And that is all, we have a set process in condemnation that has to be followed. So, we don't need to say the government shall pay for this or all that because all of that will be resolved if we decide which way to go. And it doesn't need to be part of this legislation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, once again, with the landfill being there for 60-some years and the people in Ordot Chalampago having to have that stigma of the name, the dump, whenever you say Ordot, you know, was an injustice to them. And it's even more of an injustice that we continued to build in that area and violated every type of environmental act there was or violation. So, Madam Speaker, that being said, it's time that not only did we acknowledge Ordot Chalampago being the host community, and even though we didn't have the opportunity at that time, we have, we have made up for that in regards to a bill that we recently passed called the Host Community Bill that will benefit Ordot Chalampago. So, Madam Speaker, that being said, I stand in full support of Bill 195. Thank you.
Bueno, Pobeto, Senator Titegui. Next up to speak, Speaker Wampat, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I have to commend, you know, my colleague from Baragada and I understand, you know, his drive to try to make the people whole through, you know, the efforts of what the government does and to hold the government, of course, accountable for what it does and how injustices were done to even our own people. And it's unfortunate that sometimes even our own government has done that. And here, we complain, of course, about the federal government as well. But I know that our colleague from Baragada has made every effort to really look at, you know, our finances and how then can we best use those finances and to address, you know, in particular, I know the income tax that's due our people for many years and it's gone even as far back as 2005. And even with the attempt of, at the time when this big bond was taken and Revon Tax was able to make whatever payments it could to try to bring them closer to the current fiscal year, but even to this date, the monies are still insufficient to address that. And I say also read the bill, even on page one, where it really talks about the $10 million that was actually removed, these are general or special funds from the years between 2004 and 2009. And, Madam Speaker, it was actually also at that time, in the 28th Guam Legislature, and remember this very vividly, is that we knew that the Department of Education, because of the time, the uncertainty of having sufficient, you know, funds to be able to run the school, that very early on, they decided, the board decided that they were going to furlough our teachers in August and not have them starting to start two weeks later, without really actually having to check whether, and follow the procedures in the union contract and the calendar committee. And it was taken to court and they, and they won. The judge recognized it and said that, you know, this is a debt that we owe and should pay our teachers. And the time of, and the budget, and I wasn't able to pull it out as quickly as I could. But I wanted to bring this up because I think we need to really discuss this and address this and see how then can we best, you know, address this matter and take care of it as well. Is that, these were actual cash that was going to be made available and these are the special funds, these were savings from the TEFF. And I remember, and I say remember vividly, because I made that amendment to address two payments. One was the teacher furlough and the other was this attorney that was also wrongfully mispaid. And the case were both taken to court and both have been upheld by the courts. So, that amendment first went through, the bill passed, and these were actual cash that were available. And instead, what had happened was that instead of making those payments, then because of the consent decree, the governor was able then to take that $10 million that was available immediately to be able to address then the consent decree for all the engineering services and, you know, the technical consultants and so forth that had to do at the very beginnings of this new landfill. And we've asked many times, and I know at that time, the former chairman was Senator Calvo and that between the two of us, we've been working closely with the Attorney General's Office and the Governor's Office is to make good on those payments. And I know that Chairman Panglinen has said right now that the money has been returned, but the legislature reappropriated, but the bill continues to be in the books where, when those monies are available, that they should pay and fulfill what's in, you know, the law, which is to then make good and pay, pay out the teacher furlough. And at that time, we were only talking about a little over $2 million. And today, we're now up to $4 million and upwards. So, the longer, of course, we delay this, very similar to the income tax refund, is that the interest will continue to accumulate and the amount will become astronomical and it gets harder and harder for the government to continue to try to catch up. So, when I read this and what the intent is, and I know the chairman was trying to explain to me that with the long list of priorities in which we want to be able to have the government, you know, make all of these payments, that now we're only... have the government, you know, make all of these payments, that now we're only addressing, and I, maybe the chairman can please clarify this even further, that it's just now only for the compensation of the acquisition of these private properties for the, for, you know, the Ordat landfill. So, because I really wanted to, to make, you know, an amendment to, to include that as part of all this list of obligations that the government has to pay for, that we, we include the, the payment of, for the teacher furlough. And I asked the chairman, you know, if he can please then, you know, explain this further because, you know, granted, I'm not the, the chairperson on finance and he is, is the expert, and I looked, you know, to his guidance as well in clarifying, how was it then that when, when, when these monies were actually released, that they were not then, we did not fulfill what the legislature had appropriated and wished that the, the governor, of course, would have started to, to pay out these teacher furlough? So I, Madam Speaker, if I could ask the chairman, please to enlighten me at least.
Speaker Pangolin, can you please?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the bill once again does one thing. All of the other elements of the bill with regards to expenses that are being paid by the proceeds of the bonds have been fulfilled or are being fulfilled. The bond was floated for the purpose of paying expenses associated with the opening of a new landfill, the construction of the landfill in Lezon, and the closure of Ordat. There were expenses associated with the opening of the new landfill in Lezon in which the expenses were paid for by the general fund because we did not have the financing in place under the bond structure or any other structure. So we were paying the expenses of opening the new landfill on a cash basis out of the general fund. So when we decide, when we decided that, and it was being taken away from operational needs of the departments and agencies of the government of Guam. So the governor decides then that this week, he's going to take a million dollars, the week after another million. He decided to transfer money because he had transfer authority to DPW to pay for the engineering company. And when you added up all of the payments that were made by the governor out of the general fund to expenses and, to, to services associated with the opening of the new dump, we estimated that that was no less than $10 million. So we actually had the checks written, the transfers in which engineering, 1.8, change order, another million, road design for the bridges, $500,000. So when we added up all of those expenses, they totaled no less than 10, and there were other expenses in the pike that had not been accounted for yet, and that's why we said up to $20 million. So while we were paying for all of these expenses, we were also moving forward with the financing. So when the financing came into fruition and the proceeds of the bond sale were deposited in the trust accounts, we then directed the governor that out of those trust accounts now, that all of the money that we can account for of opening activities and services associated with the construction of the new landfill and the closure of Ordat be then reimbursed by the bond proceeds. So they, we added up all of that. We don't know, we, we really don't know where the governor took it from. We just know that he took the cash out of the general fund and paid the engineers, the construction companies, the consultants for work associated with opening of the dump. And so we then, when we floated the bonds, we, we directed the trustee, here's the bill for, from the general fund for all of the costs that we've paid so far associated to the closure of the dump and the opening of the new landfill. And then they paid that money back to the general fund. So that's done already. So all of the, the general fund expenses associated with the opening of the landfill have already been reimbursed by the bond funds. So now the remaining proceeds of the bond is in this trust account and the allowable uses now, the remaining allowable uses is of course only that for use associated with opening of the new landfill and closing of the Ordat dump. And so what this bill does is it now says of the remaining proceeds in the trust account, reserve up to $3 million so that when you close Ordat and you take that property that is now part of the Ordat dump that is owned by private landowners that they, where they haven't been paid for, $3 million of the money in the trust accounts, in the bond fund trust accounts will be reserved. And then when you decide, when you determine what the, the value of that property is and you determine that and you move forward to acquiring that property, then the money is there to pay those landowners. So what happened to the $10 million or so that now was transferred two years, three years ago by the government of Guam, I mean by the trustee to the general fund? That money then went back into the general fund and was made available to pay for the appropriations of the operations of the government for that fiscal year. So we cannot, under the terms and conditions and the allowable uses under the bond covenants of the proceeds of that bond, we cannot now say, because the gov, the governor did not pay the teacher furlough and he took it from the teacher furlough when he first paid it the 10, we can't now say, give us another three, let's say for example, to pay the teacher furlough because the governor didn't pay it because that's where he took the appropriation from. It, it, that's already been reimbursed and the fact that the governor decided when he got the money back from the trustee, that he did not pay the furlough is something that, you know, I guess would be his prioritization of what he's going to pay with the appropriation levels that were provided to him. So again, you may look, it may look like, oh, we're providing new money to the general fund because we're saying here's the reimbursement. All of that's already done, you know, and it was just to show the section that's being amended and those were part of the original bill, but the only new section in this bill is that subsection B, which reserves up to $3 million for the payment of these private landowners whose properties are now being used as part of the Ordat dump and they haven't been paid for. So could, you know, could we hold the governor accountable for not paying the teacher furlough at that time when he got the money reimbursed? Yes, we could, you know, but that's totally outside of what would be allowed under the proceeds of this bond, and we couldn't take any more money out of this bond fund for any other purpose than those purposes associated with the opening of the new landfill and the closure of Ordat. So I hope that kind of explains why the issue of the, whether or not the governor paid the, the teachers is completely outside of what is being discussed in this bill and what is being proposed in this bill.
Thank you. Speaker Pangolin and Speaker Wampat, does that answer your inquiry?
Yes and no.
Okay.
And, and I think there's, there, and maybe actually that this may be two separate fun, fun, funds that we're talking about here then. If you're, if this is strictly just the monies that, and I'm reading in the very front that, that the limited obligation bond fund that, of the 202, which I guess when the grant went out, it, it speaks specifically to what the monies are supposed to be used for the landfill. The other question I have then, because if, well, let me backtrack a little bit, because I, I know that the governor had not returned that, the monies because I, and it was from the TFF is where those cash reserves or cash savings were available, and that's where we made the appropriation to pay for those obligations. Now, but the governor had used that money then for, for the initial landfill. But if, if this bill then is only to address originally then and just related matters or expenses just associated to the opening and closure of the landfill, then, then I, I can understand that. But I do have another question now then, is that because we're assuming then that there would be additional money in this particular fund to also pay then for the acquisition of private property, that's why this, okay. Now, the other question I have then is that there is just, I know, a discussion, not anything finalized yet, that there really are under in the cost now for the opening of the fund so they could realize actually some savings. But there's still the need for an additional money for the closure. Now, let's take, fast forward, and we say that the Lezon site is fully built and fully operating, and they've also already expended all the monies for the closure of the Ordat landfill, that there are now then some savings. What then can be done with those savings?
Speaker Ben?
Thank you very much. If, for example, and, and there will be some savings, it appears that there may be some savings, that, because the bids, when we decided how much money we were going to borrow was based on estimates on construction costs for the different phases of construction and estimates for the closure of the Ordat landfill. The more unknown is what it's really going to cost us to close Ordat. We estimate that that'd be $40 million and that's kind of being reserved and so forth. So remember, the 202 is inclusive of capitalized interest, issuance cost, et cetera, commissions to underwriters, et cetera. So the net proceeds after, on the bond is about $162 million, and they estimated that the construction cost is going to be $120, and $40 would be the closure cost. So that's kind of how you divide that, that pie. So far, if I recall correctly, based upon, when we went out to borrow the money, we said one sale is going to cost $40 million. Well, we've bidded out the, the cost for the one sale, and I think one sale, let's say is now, the bid came in at 30. There's a $10 million savings there. The second sale is going to cost this much. So there will be savings. What can we do with the surplus based upon the, the reduction or the savings from construction costs at all? We're now going to have to, at the end of it, when the construction is done and we've paid the bills and we have the assessment of what it's going to cost to close Ordat, the, let's say that the way we divided it is 120 for, for construction, 40 for closure. Let's say we finish the construction of what we said we were going to build, one, two, three sales. That's done and all of the bills are paid and it only cost us $100 million. So there's $20 million surplus. $20 million now will be then added to the remaining 40 so that that becomes available for the closure of Ordat. Let's say we've got the closure of Ordat, we've got all our engineering studies, we set out the bid, and the construction cost for the closure of Ordat is going to be 50 million. So we had 40 plus the 20 from the surplus, we pay the 50 million, now we have 10 million left. We now can come back and we must, and in order to use that money, there's two things you could do. You could use the $10 million to advance pay the debt service on the, on the outstanding bond. So you recall those $10 million worth of bonds, you give the bondholders back their principal plus their accrued interest to date, and therefore that $10 million is now, and we reduce then our, our bond issue and our bond obligation from the 202, we're now down to 190 because we've paid off 10 million from the surplus. That's one way we could use it. The other way we could use it is that if we could reprogram it. But in order to reprogram it, we have to pass a new law because the terms and conditions for the, on the allowable uses of the funds are set by the bond indenture and the bond covenants. So we've now got to go back to the bond underwriters and the bondholders and probably issue an announcement that we've got a surplus in this account and this government is now going to redirect that money to build, you know, bicycle lanes across the island. And we then announce it, everybody understands it, people may be given an opportunity to redeem their bonds because they don't think that, you know, there's, that we can now repay that money with, you know, for bicycle lanes because bicycle lanes don't generate any money. That, that not only is the government of Guam on the hook for this, but you know, the, the fees and the, and the tipping fees are collected. So we can't reprogram those bonds right now until we finish the project. So the two allowable uses would be, one, early redemption of the outstanding bonds, two, reprogramming it based upon meeting certain financial criteria, financial reporting requirements. But it's not available now. So that, that's the roundabout explanation to the good speaker's question.
Sisus Massey, Speaker Pangolin. Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker again, and I, and thank you very much, Senator, for that explanation. And, you know, I can, I can understand exactly, you know, where he's going, and I know that it makes it a lot difficult when we're talking about bond monies and exactly what's, you know, written in the, in the bond itself and what are the allowable uses for the money. So that, you know, clarifies, of course, you know, the bill in itself and more importantly, I guess now of trying to find ways to, to address, you know, many of our obligations and, you know, and I know that the, the chairman and OFB has been vigilant at also being finding wherever we can get savings to then start to, to make good on our prior year obligations. And I'd like to continue to work very closely with him because this is one obligation again that's also upheld in the courts. And then the longer we, we wait to, to make these payments, the costlier it would get, you know, for the government overall. So Madam Speaker, thank you for, for the opportunity, and Mr. Chairman, thank you as well for your explanation. And I do support Bill 195.
Sisus Massey, Speaker Wampat, next to speak on the main motion. Senator Tom Adda, you recognize? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the main bill? Jimmy?
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Malaguzo na bei supotesti na bill niput parau tanar resetban u tres midzon na salapi, niput pou ma ma poshi i du, i du xemangaitanu gi urizan i Ordat landfill. Ni i gubet nuan guahan na, na tsulia sa ti apashi i mangaitu xia i tano. Ti debi no matogu no, pues lekuna dinantzi na, na ta xpiya empeñu ni para ta apashi. I du xemangaitu xia na tano ni man matsuli. Magahir i du, dinantzi du laiknia i xinaduot gine ni barigada na nu estai ilai nu anahi guahagi laista nu dipuxi hafa xia pou matogu. Zangien tagipo ma konde ma i tano, which estai magai ni, ni gubet nuan ni atsuli xia i tano gi rizani zaodut nu landfill nu dump, nu, nu ma ma konde ma, izana, ma konde man tsadik i tano. Xin man hona gatu gi koti pa hafa nu tamano dipuxi pou matogu zo. Nu pues dinantzi na ta, na ta xpiya empeñu ni para ta apashi zi, pudezi tano ni man matsuli. Nu gi, gi lai esta guaha magai, guaha nu dipuxi nu process ni para tamano ni pou ma konde ma i tano. Hafa finen na pou matogu dipuxi, dipuxi i gubet nu hona zo fona i gaizu i tano. Zo fai, zo shonangi na i interesne i gubet nuan ni manisita zu na, na tano. Sa zangien konfortmi i, i duenyu na hungan na nu nishita i tano bei bendio. Pues nu zangien mottu gi na punto, pues debi i gubet nuan na parau hona uzung zo, zo xpiya zi, i du appraiser ni parau magahit, parau at. ni para magahit parau atan zo pou balua kantu magahit balina zi tano ni pou matsuli. Pues zangin monazan na za matsuli zo nan fotmashon. Debina parau den hu hono tatigi duenyo zo shonangi na i balua ni stena tano ni pa bensili. Nu kashi nu istige balina, she na benti magahit tres midzon. Pues zangin ti konfort mi, zangin ti konfort mi i duenyo pues ni sitou den i gubet nu hono pa gatu gi koti. So i koti pou di ni sidi ko nu ko magahit na i du ma frefersi i duenyo ko debi na manai maas pa ko menos. Nu pues enon na kalan nu ana ma sa du di di i astut ba di di na shoku por esti paragi di di stena punto para ta, para ta resetba nu tres midzon. Sa nu por di guahanu ani public hearing nu guaha mautu sa lekniya. Hungan kashi nu por di hafa guahagi ni nu gi rizan nu lekku na benti ni about dos midzon, tres midzon. Pues nu, nu kalan, kalan pare ustene zangin ta resetba pa ogu lo ti ta tugom agai kantu balina i tano. Ra nu zo faizi ni, anu faizi ni duenyo, kantu nu, kantu monu hinasomu nu balina se i tano. Sa tarabira gi tatii duenyo sa tugol lekniya kantu gi gibet somu. Pues zangin shonangi na gua tres midzon, pues teniki magahit teniki oluk na opes tres midzon lekku na balina ze na tano.
So I've done my, our immersion, two minutes of speaking, and tomorrow. Now, let's see if I can say the same thing, let me see if I can say the same thing in English. I certainly fully support the idea that we should begin addressing the injustice that was done to the landowners by our government, who went in there and basically took properties around that Ordot dump so that we can, so that we can deposit our solid waste there. But we took the land from those private property owners without just compensation. Now, earlier, the gentleman from Barigada stated that, you know, there is a process. There is a process already in our law books which sets out the step-by-step actions that need to be done when land condemnation is involved. First of all, the government of Guam needs to approach the landowner, make them be aware that they do need to take this property to provide a public service. And if the property owner is receptive to selling that property, then it is incumbent upon the government of Guam to hire an appraiser, who then goes out there and formally does whatever an appraiser does to place an economic value on that property. The government of Guam then is supposed to take that information, which is based on expert judgment, and goes back to the landowner and says, "According to the evaluation and the appraisal that was done, your land is worth two million dollars." Or the val, total value of the land that was taken is worth two million dollars. And an offer of two million dollars is made. And if the landowner then feels that that is just compensation, they can then agree right there, and an exchange is made. The government gives the landowner the two million dollars. The landowner signs over the title or the ownership for the amount of land that's being taken. If the landowner feels that that is not just compensation, then the next step is they go to court. And the court then decides whether, in fact, the government's offer is reasonable and just, and makes a decision at that point. Where I have a problem is that the, although we're going to be reserving as much as three million dollars, I have a concern with that because of the fact that, that... I guess the three million dollars is based on an informal input that was provided during the public hearing that, you know, based on activities that they've seen going on around that area, that, you know, probably the value of the land that was taken is about two-and-a-half million dollars. But I'm concerned about the fact that we haven't gone through that formal appraisal process to say that, yes, today, if we were to exchange that land and buy that land, it was going to be worth two million dollars, two-and-a-half million, I don't know. The concern that I have about setting aside three million dollars is it's kind of like my coming to you and saying, "I want to buy your land." You then, the landowner, turns around and says, "How much do you have in your pocket?" So of course, I respond and I say, "I have three million dollars in my pocket." So as a landowner, I say, "Well, then, I think three million dollars is a fair value. That's how much my land is worth." I would like to maybe prefer, I think I would feel more comfortable if we were to put language in here, first of all, stipulating and recognizing that the government of Guam did in fact take property around the Ordot landfill, and that it has to be compensated. That issue needs to be settled, which I believe at this point has not. So I think language to that extent. How, and then, and then language to the effect that funds, as soon as an appraisal has been completed, that then the amount of funds to be set aside shall be based on that appraisal. And, and that's the amount that's going to be set aside. Now, whether the landowners at this point is going to think, is going to, you know, agree whether that's just compensation, then, then that's, that's, that's a matter that will have to be decided by the court. But at least to have some kind of formal, I guess, formal evaluation, that until that appraisal has been performed, and not just, you know, a swag, once that is done, then that will be the basis for how much is to be set aside as opposed to some arbitrary number that may have surfaced during the public hearing. And, and I would feel more comfortable because then the government can say, "That amount that's being reserved is based on an expert evaluation that was done today." As opposed to a, really, a, an educated guess that was, that was mentioned during the public hearing, which I understand is basically where the basis came from for, you know, "Why just three million dollars? Why not four? Why not one?" And so, I don't have language right now to make that amendment. But maybe I, if, if the, if the author would yield, or maybe take a, take a short, short recess here to just kind of gauge, gauge that, then, that sentiment that I'm expressing, then I think I would like to do that because I feel uncomfortable about just the, this arbitrary amount that's being put out there. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and take a brief recess.
Madam Speaker.
The legislature's packing session, Senator Adada, you still have the floor.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I think if we take a look at page three there, paragraph B at the top of lines one through three, that's the new provision which recognizes the fact that private property was taken by the government for use at the Ordon dump. And I guess my interpretation is that this $3 million figure that is being identified to be set aside for the acquisition of that property is really a ceiling that, you know, no more than $3 million will be compensated for the property that was taken. Any asking for more than $3 million then is a, you know, is a whole new ballgame and we're going to have to come back to the table again. But I think that to ease some of the concerns, it probably would be prudent to put language at the end of line three after Government of Guam period, a new sentence that says, "An appraisal of the property must be obtained prior to acquisition of the private property used for the Ordon dump."
Can you again repeat that to make sure, I will provide a copy to the clerks.
An appraisal of the property, an appraisal of the private property used for the Ordon dump must be obtained prior to acquisition thereof. Okay? And basically what it just means then is that when the acquisition is made, at least there is a formal evaluation that must be made from which then negotiations will take place for purposes of acquisition.
Okay, so once again, is an appraisal of the private property used for the Ordon-- landfill.
Which is used, Ordon landfill--
Must be obtained.
--must be obtained prior to acquisition thereof.
Okay, on the add amendment, any discussion, there being none or objections, so ordered. Okay, I have Senator Spaldan to speak on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I definitely support this legislation because back during my first term, I had the opportunity to work with this whole landfill dump issue, and this situation came to my attention by the landowners of that area. Unfortunately, at the time, because it was still, we were still trying to figure out how to close Ordon and what would be the alternative, there was really no money available to figure out how do we compensate these landowners in which a taking by the government was made. In other words, with the expansion, as time evolved, the landfill grew, and as it grew, it basically naturally, in essence, encroached upon the surrounding properties of which now we're dealing with. And so I do support definitely the intent of this legislation to compensate the landowners because now, as the good author of this bill has identified, that there is the possibility to set aside some monies from the bond proceeds for this particular situation. So now there is something to compensate the families whose property has been taken. However, I do have a question, which I hope the author would entertain, and it's basically, right now on page two, we essentially assert that the legislature finds that 134,000 square meters of land has been condemned, has, you know, has not been condemned but purchased, but in essence, has been taken. And the question then becomes, on what basis do we, as a legislature, ascertain that that is exactly what has been taken? Are we relying upon perhaps just a site survey of what the total land volume, or I should say acreage, that the landowners had, or is it the actual amount of land that was taken by the expansion of the dump? So again, I just wanted to make sure we, I understand how we ascertain the 134,000 square meters.
Senator, do you, you to the question?
Yes. And the, the figure comes from a site drawing, ass-built drawing that's been done based upon aerial surveys by the Department of Public Works. So this is, the Department of Public Works began dealing with this issue of its encroachment on this private property. And so based upon the original government property, the footprint of the Ordon landfill, and of when it was first started, and the size of the government property in that area, and then based upon analysis of the expansion and where it expanded to, that it has moved into this private property and that, that close to 134 square meters of property have now, are now located on property not belonging to the Government of Guam. So the Department of Public Works have actually gone out there, measured the property, and so one of the things that the, the receiver, I had sent to the receiver was, when we begin mapping out the actual site of the Ordon dump, that part of the scope of work that will occur is that they will go in then and re-verify all of the survey, and they will re-verify the points of where the dump sites are, the points of the government land, and now the points of the dump that are in the private property. So the receiver has issued an RFP for pre-closure activities at Ordon, and one of the, the task orders in that, in that RFP will be a survey, a land, an actual survey to map out the footprint of the Ordon dump, the footprint of the property owned by the government, and the footprint of the property that is not government land. So there will be surveys that will be conducted to make that final determination. But the 130,000 square meters is based on some aerial surveys that were done, some calculations done by the Department of Public Works, and so forth. And so this is, this section, of course, is the legislative findings, and it's based on the records that are, that have been available at the Department of Public Works, and the work that's been done to determine this, because there was a time when the government tried to move forward to condemn that property, but nothing ever happened, it just dropped and came to a standstill. And so we base these numbers based on those records and the file that was available at DPW.
Senator.
Thank you, no, that was, that was, that was a good explanation, and I appreciate that, because like I said, I do support definitely the intent and what we're trying to accomplish here, because imagine owning some property, and all of a sudden, there was a taking, and it wasn't just any old taking, it was basically a taking to dump trash on your property. And again, I know that the families around that area have suffered for decades in terms of first, just the proximity of their properties, and the quiet enjoyment of their properties was not available to them because of the proximity to the dump, but as well as then after that, there was an actual taking by, by encroachment, right, of the dump for, of course, the good of the, of the public, but again, at the deprivation of the right to use that property by these landowners. So I appreciate that. I, can I just take one, 30 seconds, Madam Speaker, just to speak with my Senator to the left.
We'll take a brief recess.
It's been discussed, and also the amendment that the good Senator Adada tacked on to this legislation, because I also had a concern about the appraisal and whatnot, and I think that only just kind of strengthens it, and really it's more to make sure that, you know, we, of course, recognize that there are processes, you know, there's a step one, a step two, a step three, to make sure that this process is handled correctly. Not that we had any, you know, real suspicion in terms that they wouldn't, but again, just to make sure that everybody understands that we're just not taking some number out of the air without an appraisal going forward, and that the landowners will be given the total of $3 million. It will be based upon, all negotiations will be based upon the appraisals forthcoming. So with that, Madam Speaker, I fully support this legislation as it stands right now, and we look forward to the resolutions to compensate the families in which there was an unfair, uncompensated taking of their properties, and the use of their properties over time with, again, no compensation for the use, and again, from a very appropriate funding source, which is the bond money which was taken out for the landfill and the closing of the Ordon dump. And until we take care of this matter, we cannot, I believe, appropriately move forward to close the Ordon dump unless that property does indeed belong to the Government of Guam. So this definitely is in line, and I thank the author for this, for helping the families in that area. Like I said, I was privy to their, to their dilemma back when we were going through the, through the whole law review commission in terms of how to deal with Ordon dump and the opening of a new landfill or another alternative means of disposing of our trash. But like I said, back then, there was no prospect of where we could get the money from, and now that we have gotten to this point with the receivership and the bond floating and actual monies there in an account, that this now is probably the appropriate time to look at the issue of compensating the landowners in that area. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Spaldan, on the main motion. Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 195. Again, we know of families, of course, around there that still wait, of course, for some kind of compensation or resolution or remedy to the, for the properties that right now they cannot use because it's condemned, or it's now on the dump itself, or as part of the dump itself. I believe that Bill 159, just the mere fact that, that the government proposes to put aside some money is actually an acknowledgement that this government has to compensate these property owners, and perhaps the amount-- And perhaps the amount, the monetary figure here noted here can be modified at a later date. I think the most important here, with this bill with respect to compensation property owners, again, Madam Speaker, is the fact that the government acknowledges that some kind of compensation has to occur and has to take place, and I stand in full support of Bill 195, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the motion, Bill 195? There being none, I'd like to call on the author to provide a closing remark and a motion to place on third reading. Senator Panglinen to close.
Thank you, and Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly want to thank all my colleagues who spoke in favor of this legislation, most especially those who actually took the time to make some amendments to the bill. Because we all know that, you know, as government officials, we have a responsibility to act in the best interest of the government. And we want that, that when we act in the best interest of the government, we are in fact acting in the best interest of the people. Because the people are the government. But at some times, we're on opposite sides when it comes to issues that, most especially when, for example, in this case, the government is violating the private property rights of the individuals. And so, in that kind of situation, the government really needs to be even a little bit more accommodating to the people when they have violated the people's rights over all these years. And that's exactly what's happened here. We've not only violated their rights, we've denied them of their rights. We've denied the people of the economic use of this property over the years without giving them due process. Because we could, if we had gone in and said, "We're going to use the property, you don't agree with it, but we're going to go through the process and give you due process to challenge our right to deny you of this piece of property, and we're going to do that, and we will go to court to ensure that you have the ability to challenge us." We've never even done that to these poor people. We just went in and started dumping our trash there, the entire island's trash. And these people, over the years, have tried and come to this government, to petition this government, to respond to the denial of their rights, and even more injurious to them, the denial of the economic use of their valuable property. And it is time that we move forward and restore these people, make them whole, and give them the justice that they duly deserve, and the proper due process in terms of making them whole. And I think this bill goes a long ways towards that. It takes us much more, much further down the road. It's not done yet, we haven't, we will not finish with this bill, but we will have all of the resources in place to make these people whole. And that is further down the road than we've ever been before. And I'm confident that with this bill, that we will find that very shortly, we will get to the end of the road of making these people whole for what we have done to them and how we have injured them. This government has. And I thank my colleagues for ensuring that we have proper balance and guidance as we move forward to achieving that day for these, our citizens in this community. Thank you, and Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. On the motion, and to send Bill 195 as the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Panglinen, you can remain standing for Bill Number 252.
Thank you, and Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 252-30COR be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to just briefly discuss it.
Yes, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 252 is a bill that is administrative in nature. One of the ways in which the government negotiators under the health insurance benefits that are available to the government of Guam employees have looked at is the ability to enter into what we would call self-funded plans structured by providers of this service to make available to the government of Guam employees. And when you have a self-funded plan, you have to have, payments are made by the members of the plan who decide to participate in that program, and deductions are made out of their salaries to be placed in this fund, and then claims are paid out of this fund from the deposits made by the people who decide to sign up for this plan. And so, that is an option that is being explored by the Governor of Guam Health Negotiating Committee. Last year, we actually had somebody respond to structuring a self-funded plan, and we actually started moving forward on implementing that plan. And one of the things that became, came to light was that there is no mechanism to set up an account to receive the deposits of the premiums paid by the individuals who choose to participate in this plan. There's no mechanism set up, and there's no authority for the Governor of Guam to set up an account and receive these deposits and then make payments out of it. So this bill basically allows the Department of Administration to set up an account for these self-funded plans when the government, and if the government gets a proposal, decides to move forward and set up a self-funded plan. And so, it just creates, allows the Department of Administration to set up the funding of the plan, and then outlines what is allowable payments out of these funds when a program is implemented that is a self-funded program feature. So it is administrative in nature and sets up the mechanism to allow for such a program to be offered to the Governor of Guam employee in the future, should the Governor of Guam Negotiating Committee decide that a proposal like this will benefit the employees. So it really is, as I said, quite technical and administrative in nature, and begins to, and allows the authority to set up a plan if the Governor of Guam Negotiating Committee accepts one and decides it's in the best interest of the employee. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, there being none, so, on the motion, Senator Panglinen, unless there's something else you want to add to close, so on the motion, and to send Bill 252, third reading file without any objections, so ordered. It was Senator Ogden is not here, so I would go ahead and proceed again with Senator Panglinen on Bill 388.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 388 be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it very briefly.
Please continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 388 would codify, and put into a section of the law, legislation that really has been passed many times by this legislative body. As you know, when the Governor of Guam issues debt in a form of bonds, that these bonds are sold to investors off-island. And what we found is that because Guam bonds are very attractive to off-island investors because of their unique triple-tax-exempt status, meaning exempt from federal income tax, exempt from state income tax, and exempt from municipal income tax, for those residents that live in jurisdictions that have those taxes imposed upon their interest income and earnings on investment vehicles such as municipal bonds. Because we have the authority under GIDA, given to us by the Organic Act, to waive these taxes, then somebody who buys a bond off-island will not have to pay their federal income tax, their state income tax, and their municipal income tax on the interest earnings of their bonds, of these government of Guam bonds. So because these are so attractive, when we go to the market and sell them, our bond underwriters who work for us usually have these bonds sold before they're even offered on what you call the retail side of it. They're sold, they take, they reserve these bonds for their best clients, because their best clients wants the tax exemption so that they can maximize their yield. So these bonds are almost pre-sold by the time we go to market and price them, so that if you're a Guam resident and you want to buy these Guam bonds, they're usually none available at all, because they've all been bought up by these big institutional investors in the United States because of the relationship the bond underwriters have with these institutional investors. And so we've begun, in the last few bond issues that we had, that we would put in an amendment that GIDA pre-announce or get pre-issuance offers on these bonds, that when we're ready to sell the bonds in the states, GIDA would advertise locally, say, "Hey, we're going to go out with this issue, these bonds are available, give us your order right now and make your commitment to us, and when we go and price the bonds, we'll reserve this amount for you, the local investor who wants to buy Guam bonds." And so, we've set up a criteria, and we've actually included this in every, the last four or five bond authorizations that have come out of this body. But those authorizations, or this requirement, is only for that specific bond issue, so that every time we pass a new bond issue, sometimes we forget to put this language in. And so what this does is, this then codifies it, so that every future bond issue, GIDA would be required to go through the process of pre-announcement locally, getting pre-orders and advance orders on these bonds, so that we provide the opportunity for our local investors who wish to buy these bonds. Now, why do we want to do this? Why is it good? Number one, we give advantage to our local people to buy these bonds and participate in this tax-exempt status of the bond issues, so that we also maximize our local taxpayers' yield on these investments. Secondly, the more bonds we sell locally, the better for Guam, because now we have the interest earnings on these bonds. We may not tax them because they're tax-exempt, but they go to Guam residents who spend that money. They either take now their interest earned on this money, and they either spend it on our local economy, or they deposit it with one of our local banking institutions, and then there's more money at the banks for those, the banks to lend out because their deposit basis increase. It's a little way of ensuring that, number one, we provide this opportunity to our local investors, and two, we keep the money on island. You know, when you take a look at how much interest payments that we make to bondholders off-island, all of that money gets shipped off-island, it doesn't circulate in our economy. And this will just help us capture some of those interest payments that we make to bondholders to capture them by ensuring that everyone who wants to buy Guam bonds will have access to that before we sell it all out in the retail and the wholesale market in the United States. So this codifies that language that we've passed before, and ensures then that every future bond issue would be subject to this provision. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. On the motion, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm certainly in support of this legislation. You know, it gives our, as was presented by the author of the legislation, it provides our people the same opportunities that other individuals in huge, large corporations have in being able to take advantage of the issuance of the tax-exempt bonds that we have. Question that I have, though, is, looking at the legislation here, and the enabling legislation and the direction, is, and maybe...
I know, you want to take a brief recess?
Yes, please.
Until you return, so okay.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, if the author of the legislation can yield to a question, the basic question is based on this legislation, does GIDA have the existing authority right now to basically act as a seller broker or somebody that can exchange in this? Or is there a legislation or something that we're going to need to be able to codify or to mandate or to authorize them to be able to do this?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes. The bill doesn't make, doesn't, GIDA is not selling the bonds. GIDA is announcing that the bonds are available. They get, take a reservation from the investor through their office, GIDA relays that reservation offer to the bond underwriters, and the sale is consummated between the bond underwriters and the investor. So GIDA is just the conduit for channeling the information and the reservation and the amount to the underwriters. So they're not being licensed to sell these bonds, and so they're not selling the bonds.
Okay, okay. That helps answer the question. And maybe, I'd like to see that, this is the first step in being able to ensure, or for this process. Of course, you know, we've got to see how this would work. I suspect that we're probably going to need to somehow find a protection so that if an individual who wants to invest provides the information to GIDA, has all his finances set up, and then somehow there's a breakdown between GIDA and the company that's going to purchase the stock, or purchase the bond in behalf of the individual. I just don't want the government to be in as far as a liability issue with regards to making sure that, because we're basically acting as the middleman here.
Would you like, Senator, to respond?
Well, and...
Senator Panglinen?
30-second recess.
Okay. We'll get a brief recess.
I just don't want, if someone has an admission, and then they go to GIDA, okay, GIDA says, "Okay, we're going to do this," then...
Senator Palacios, do you have the floor?
No, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Blasch, you still have the floor?
No, thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you for the opportunity to take that recess to have the discussion with the author of the bill. I think that, you know, there was a, I just had some concerns with regards and I think that these are some things that can work itself out through the process of, you know, through this legislation and having GIDA set up those parameters. So that it could take care of itself from there. Thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you. Senator Blas, on the motions, is there anybody who would like to speak on the main motion, Bill 388? There being none. The author, Senator Panglinen, you may close? Or you want to send it down? Okay, so on the motion then to send Bill 388 down to the third reading file without any objections, so order. Too many discussions going on in here. So we're going to take a lunch break until 2:00. When we return, we do have two bills, 386 and 416 and 373 that will be taken up at 2:00 this afternoon. So we are in recess. Let me see. Gaige, see. Senator Panglinen, Blaschus, Tony Ada, Vice Speaker Espoada. Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis. Two more. Can you please call? Oh, and Senator Agun is here too, so... Okay. The legislature's called back to order. I recognize the author of Bill 386, Senator Frank Blas. I mean, Agun Jr. Frank Blas, you're right. Agun Jr. Have a do. Eto, okay.
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. This is Massey, Madam Speaker, that we're going to start this. Guam, five senators, the senator, and Gaige Genig, four senators consider the bill number, number 416. That then, after, that's the bill that we're discussing, the bill, the 386. Please, I think five senators consider it.
Okay, as soon as I can find it. 416. Four? 416? Does everybody have a copy of that? I'm trying to find my copy.
Anybody, Madam Speaker? This is...
Okay, Bill 416.
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the consideration of the body to place Bill number 416 as 3-0, as substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services and Judiciary into the third reading file, please.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is an issue that was discussed in a public hearing not too long ago where, in fact, it was recognized that members of the Board of Medical Examiners as well as members of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners are appointed by the chief executive with little oversight or consideration on the part of the members of the body in terms of having to go through the confirmation process. And what Bill number 416 provides, because of the critical nature of our healthcare industry, it provides that these particular members, although they will continue to serve out their term, that upon the conclusion of their term, that they would have to be reconsidered and reappointed by the chief executive or the chief executive would have that option of appointing someone else to fill that particular position. So if you're looking at the legislation, Madam Speaker, all it does is it recognizes the appointment of the members. It recognizes the authority of the chief executive. It only allows for all of these individuals that are appointed to these two boards that they be considered and go through the confirmation process of the legislative body. So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to request a consideration of the members of this body if, in fact, they would allow, support this legislation. Because I think although it's in full nature, it's impactful in terms of allowing these board members to continue to be directly accountable, transparent and open with members of this body in conjunction with the public and the people of Guam. So I ask consideration of the members of the bodies. This is Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Agun. On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Espoada, you're recognized. 416.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if the good author of this bill would perhaps just consent to a question. And the question is, right now, as I understand it, the members of the Allied Health, the Board of Allied Health basically have been there for a while now. Is that a correct statement?
Mm-hmm.
In essence, there was no real term limit on their position at the board. So those who have been there for a while have been there for a while. And that's a correct statement, Senator?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
If you look at the legislation, thank you very much, Senator, a good colleague from Tamanian. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. If you look at the legislation, it's per the code and the mandate and the statute and you can see where the changes are incorporated. So yes, in fact, the members have served continuously. As a matter of fact, someone said during the course of the public hearing that an individual had served for 15 years. Which is not an issue with me as long as we incorporate some sense of review and oversight with these respective boards. The answer is yes.
Yeah, and I guess that leads to the real question, which is that I'm not really sure how that's being addressed in the legislation. I mean, if there is no term limit for those who presently sit on the board, when does this take effect? Because there is no provision in here saying, when will the present board's term expire so that now the governor, with the advice and consent of the legislature, can then nominate and place new board members in?
If I may, Madam Speaker, and with the indulgence of the good Senator, what has traditionally transpired is upon the transition or changeover of administration, there's been courtesy resignation submitted by board members with a few exceptions. And that's exclusive of the GCC Board of Trustees, the University of Guam Board of Regents, the Civil Service Commission and possibly another board that will be considered shortly. But aside from that, it has traditionally been requested that courtesy resignations be provided by members of the board and then individuals be appointed by the sitting chief executive.
Well, which begs to mind that if they do not submit their courtesy resignation, then what happens? So if we're going to go down this road, I would, since this is going to be really the reformulation of a new start in which term limits are going to be incorporated into the board, then it would seem that we would have to state that the board's term will end on a date certain or upon a certain occurrence or whatever. So that then the appointment becomes, follows naturally.
Senator Agun?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, Senator. If you take a look at, as a good example, Section 3 on Page 4, there's verbiage there that allows for the term of appointment shall be for a period of three years, at the end of which the chief executive shall have the opportunity to be able to reappoint or nominate a new individual. Now, that's where it comes in. I think perhaps the question of our good colleague, Madam Speaker, is somewhat different in terms of the changeover of possible administrations. And in this particular case, like I said, traditionally, it has been courtesy resignation submitted. Otherwise, this would term those individuals out upon the conclusion of their, the term that they have been appointed to serve.
Senators, can we take a brief recess?
I believe we need, a recess is necessary, Madam Speaker.
All right, recess.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, and by extending, Noculuna Sizumasi, by the Senator, and again, in Sumasega Tamuninga, Senator, Sumasega Baragada, thank you very much, Senators, for extending your, part of your discussion and your concern with regards to this legislation. I think that the biggest concern that was discussed previously, Madam Speaker, was the eventual transition in terms of allowing the implementation of this proposal, should it be passed into law. So just based on that, I would like to add a new section to the legislation which would read effective date. The provisions contained in this act shall take effect no later than January 2, 2011, whereupon the chief executive shall have the option of reappointing incumbent or new board members, who shall serve in accordance with the provisions contained herein. So please, Madam Speaker, I ask for the consideration of our colleagues. Sizumasi.
On the amendment, any discussion? No discussion without any objections? So ordered. Are there any, anyone else who would like to speak on the main motion? Senator, I mean Senator Ada, you are recognized. Tom Ada, that is.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think the bill is a good bill, but I just want to proffer a couple of amendments. One of the requirements, or actually two requirements, for an appointee to the board is that the individual must have practiced in Guam for at least five years, and must have resided in Guam for five years. And I think maybe we just need to be a little bit more precise, in that I think that maybe what we really should require is that the individual must have practiced in Guam for at least five consecutive years preceding the appointment, and must have resided in Guam for five consecutive years preceding that appointment. So at least with those two requirements, we know that that individual, of course, has been with the community, is pretty much abreast of the issues regarding the health community, and has also been practicing in this community. We've seen several professionals who lived here on Guam for a couple of years, moved off to Saipan, practiced up there for a couple of years, and then when the economy tanked up there, they moved back, and so there was that broken service. So I would just proffer the amendment then on Page 2, Line 23, to read, have practiced in Guam for at least five consecutive years preceding the appointment. And then on Line 24, should read, have resided in Guam for five consecutive, for five consecutive, at least five consecutive years preceding the appointment. And you'll find the same amendment should probably be applied on Page 4, starting with Line 16 there, it should read, practice in their respective disciplines for at least five consecutive years preceding the appointment. And again, on Line 18, resided in Guam for at least five consecutive years preceding
I ask you please to have that in writing.
Yesterday we said that your amendment was longer.
Okay. Can we do each one then, so that, because I want to make sure, it's really important that the clerks are able to follow along with you, so can we do each one of them? On Page 2.
Okay, so the amendment is, on Page 2, Line 23.
Line 23.
Will read, have practiced in Guam for at least five consecutive years preceding the appointment.
Five consecutive years preceding.
Preceding the appointment.
The appointment. Okay, the clerks are able to get that?
Okay.
Okay, and that's.
And then on Line 24.
And then Line 24.
Just a point of information, Madam Speaker.
Yes.
Because.
Say your point of information.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good Senator from Ayala. If the concern is to ensure that the individual have served in Guam for the immediately preceding five consecutive years, I think there has to be an assertion of an additional phrase, because the way it reads right now, it says at least five consecutive years preceding the appointment. Let's say the appointment were to take place tomorrow, that individual had served five consecutive years, let's say 15 years ago. So I think there should, really should be an assertion of immediately preceding the appointment, if that's the intent of the mover of the amendment, Madam Speaker.
Senator, Senator Ogun, then what I can do is that he's making the amendment, and we can have you amend then his amendment, okay?
Okay.
All right, so Senator Ada, on Line 24.
It would read then, have resided in Guam for five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment.
Immediately preceding the appointment.
Yes, and I'll put, I will insert the word immediately also on that Line 23, yes.
Immediately, so okay, let's address those two then first, so.
Point of information.
On the amendment points, please say your point of information.
When the good Senator from Ayala first proffered his amendment, on Line 24, it would have read, who have resided in Guam for at least five consecutive years, in other words, there was a word, the word at least. Oh yes, that's right. For at least.
Okay, so we've, all right, so we've got three. Line 23 is five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment.
Yes.
Line 24 is for at least five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment.
Yes, Madam Speaker, and that same phrase will be found on Page 4, starting on Line 16 there, the same amendments can be put in.
For at least five years, again.
Yes, at least five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment.
Immediately, okay, so the same language.
Yes, and then on Line 18, must have resided in Guam for at least five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment.
I ask you please to have that in writing.
Yesterday we said that your amendment was longer.
Okay. Can we do each one then, so that, because I want to make sure, it's really important that the clerks are able to follow along with you, so can we do each one of them? On Page 2.
Okay, so the amendment is, on Page 2, Line 23.
Line 23.
Will read, have practiced in Guam for at least five consecutive years preceding the appointment.
Five consecutive years preceding.
Preceding the appointment.
The appointment, okay. The clerks are able to get that?
Okay.
Okay, and that's.
And then on Line 24.
And then Line 24.
Just a point of information, Madam Speaker.
Yes.
Because.
Say your point of information.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good Senator from Ayala. If the concern is to ensure that the individual have served in Guam for the immediately preceding five consecutive years, I think there has to be an assertion of an additional phrase, because the way it reads right now, it says at least five consecutive years preceding the appointment. Let's say the appointment were to take place tomorrow, that individual had served five consecutive years, let's say 15 years ago. So I think there should, really should be an assertion of immediately preceding the appointment, if that's the intent of the mover of the amendment, Madam Speaker.
Senator, Senator Ogun, then what I can do is that he's making the amendment, and we can have you amend then his amendment, okay?
Okay.
All right, so Senator Ada, on Line 24.
It would read then, have resided in Guam for five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment.
Immediately preceding the appointment.
Yes, and I'll put, I will insert the word immediately also on that Line 23, yes.
Immediately, so okay, let's address those two then first, so.
Point of information.
On the amendment points, please say your point of information.
When the good Senator from Ayala first proffered his amendment, on Line 24, it would have read, who have resided in Guam for at least five consecutive years. In other words, there was a word, the word at least. Oh yes, that's right. For at least.
Okay, so we've, all right, so we've got three. Line 23 is five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment.
Yes.
Line 24 is for at least five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment.
Yes, Madam Speaker, and that same phrase will be found on Page 4, starting on Line 16 there, the same amendments can be put in.
For at least five years, again.
Yes, at least five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment.
Immediately, okay, so the same language.
Yes, and then on Line 18, must have resided in Guam for at least five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment.
Okay, I see then, all right. So on the four amendments, and they're the same amendments throughout the bill, I want to make sure that everybody now is following, so with, no one would like to speak on it? No objections then? So ordered. Senator Ada, can you please make sure then that the clerks do get a copy of your amendment? Thank you very much. Senator Blas, on the main motion, or, that's right, not the amendment, not the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with regards to, and recognizing that the legislation is proffered, seeks to make amendments and some changes to the existing legislation or existing code that exists for, with regards to Guam Board of Medical Examiners and Guam Board of Allied Health Professionals in the existing law, which is, you can see on Page 4, there's language here that basically says, there shall be no board member appointment with less than 10 allied health professionals qualified applicants for licensure within that allied health profession of the applicants. Madam Speaker, the allied health board, you know, basically represents 17 different professions, you know, on the island, and in reading this, you know, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that it severely limits the ability of those professions that are being governed by this board, who do not meet the threshold of having more than 10, at least 10 professionals, of being able to actively participate, or even become eligible to become board members. So I find that to be, for lack of a better word, discriminatory towards those professions, those areas that don't meet that threshold. I don't see a reason why that should be needed. I think that, in all fairness, to these professions that are being governed by this, that we give them the ample opportunity to also be represented on this board. So therefore, I propose that, starting on Page 4, Line 6, that that whole sentence, starting from there shall be no, to Line 9, with the word applicants, that that sentence be deleted.
On the amendment, the Blas amendment, to delete the words, I mean the sentence, starting from Line 6, where it says there shall be no, to the end of, I mean the beginning of Line 9, applicants, period. On the amendments, Senator Spalding.
Madam Speaker, I don't have a problem with the amendment, however, when you take it in context, and if you start from, on Page 3, and you read it, again, and it was just revealed to me by the, by the good mover of the amendment, my colleague from Baragada, that there are now 17 different sectors that are basically governed by the Board of Allied Health Examiners. So there seems, there is going to be inconsistency now, really in the law, if there really are 17 different sectors, you know, that the allied health examiner has oversight of. Because if you read it, it says there is established in and for the Governor of Guam, a Guam Board of Health Examiners, allied board of, composed of or represented from each of the professions being examined for licensure, of which currently there are nine members nominated. So again, it seems to me, and I'm just bringing this up as a, something to think about, because if we're saying that, you know, there's got to be nine members, and yet each of the various sectors have got to be represented, and now there are 17, then, again, I just want to bring it to the attention that since we're tweaking this law, and then we're going to take out a section that says, you know, there shall be no board member with less than 10, as the amendment is right now, and like you said, I have no problem with the amendment, but there seems to be an inconsistency, inconsistency, at least, maybe in syntax, or maybe even just logically, in the way the law will read from now on. And it's not, has nothing to do with the amendment, but in a sense it does, I mean, you know, really, because it was just, and it just came my attention when the previous speaker, the mover of their amendment, said there are 17 sectors within, that the allied board has jurisdiction over, and if each of those segments are going to be required to be represented, and there's only nine members, then there's an inconsistency. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
We're going to take a brief recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have nothing else to say. I just wanted to bring that to the body's attention, because ultimately, there may be, it may be problematic, but right now, it's not an issue for the amendment, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
So on the Blas amendment, is there anybody who would like to speak on the Blas amendment? There being no objection to the Blas amendment, so ordered. Can you please make sure that the clerk has that as well? On the main motion, any other speakers? Senator Ogun, then to close on your bill, 416.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to, you know, I just, it's kind of interesting how things evolve, and they get better as time goes on in terms of the deliberation on this floor, and I just want to thank all of our colleagues who actively participated in the discussion, because I think we have a better legislation before us that we could ultimately decide on. And yes, it's not a perfect bill, but in this particular case, maybe we need to revisit some of the existing codes. But thank you very much to you, Madam Speaker, and to all the members of this body. Thank you.
On the motion then to send, Bill 416, the third reading filed, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Ogun, you are also again recognized for Bill Number 386.
When I start this, Madam Speaker, Noculuna Sizumasi, we have before us, Madam Speaker, Bill Number 386, and just to provide some general sense of what the proposal or the legislation proposes, there, this is legislation that was presented to the committee by the former chairman of the Board of Trustees at Guam Memorial Hospital, as well as a number of the board members. And they requested consideration as a result of their discussion with some of the accreditation team members, in terms of maintaining the consistency of leadership at the Board of Trustees level for GMH. And Madam Speaker, basically, this is legislation that would allow for a process that you're very intimately involved in, in terms of being the Chair of Education, because the University of Guam has a very similar process that is being proposed in this legislation, is that we take that concept of the creation of a nominating council, that nominating council would then in turn be able to nominate three or four individuals, forward that to the chief executive, whereupon the chief executive would select from that list of nominees for appointments to the GMH Board of Trustees, and then ultimately, that individual selected will be presented to the legislature for confirmation. And Madam Speaker, it creates that council, and then also another facet of this proposal is that it would allow for consistency in leadership regardless as to what the administration is. And what I say, what I mean in that regard is that the existing and incumbent members of any incumbent administration would allow, would be allowed to continue to serve out their term without having to submit a courtesy resignation. And we asked, I initially asked some serious concerns about, okay, why would we want to move in this particular direction? And the comment, general comment that was shared with me that, was that there's some serious concerns in regards to the accreditation of that facility, and ensuring that regardless as to which administration takes over, that there's that sense of continuity. very intimately involved in, in terms of being the Chair of Education, because the University of Guam has a very similar process that is being proposed in this legislation, is that we take that concept of the creation of a nominating council, that nominating council would then in turn be able to nominate three or four individuals, forward that to the chief executive, whereupon the chief executive would select from that list of nominees for appointments to the GMH Board of Trustees, and then ultimately, that individual selected will be presented to the legislature for confirmation. And, Madam Speaker, it creates that council, and then also another facet of this proposal is that it would allow for consistency in leadership regardless as to what the administration is. And what I say, what I mean in that regard is that the existing and incumbent members of any incumbent administration would allow, would be allowed to continue to serve out their term without having to submit a courtesy resignation. And we asked, I initially asked some serious concerns about, okay, why would we want to move in this particular direction? And the comment, general comment that was shared with me that was that there's some serious concerns in regards to the accreditation of that facility, and ensuring that regardless as to which administration takes over, that there's that sense of continuity in leadership, and the understanding of where that the GMH operations is despite any new appointees. So that was the presentation that was provided to me, and also during the course of the public hearings, some comments were provided about endorsing this legislation and allowing for that consistency in leadership and the continuity of service by a number of the board members. I want to also say, Madam Speaker, that the now deceased former chairman of the Board of Trustees, this was more or less his brainchild in terms of discussing it with some of the other board members, and he was very, a very, a very strong proponent on this legislation only because he understood and he shared some of the serious concerns by the accrediting team at that time, when in fact, they were provided preconditional accreditation. And we've seen what has transpired in the last month and a half, Madam Speaker, where in fact, GMH has been provided a accreditation status, a three-year accreditation, and kudos to not only the governor and the lieutenant governor, but also the management team, as well as the Board of Trustees, and as well as every single professional and staff members at GMH, because they've done a fantastic team in terms of making that presentation, and continuing to assure our people that that only public hospital will provide safe and quality healthcare services, at least during the duration of the accreditation status. So, Madam Speaker, this is in line with that. As our colleagues, once again, it would establish a council that would be a nominating council for Board of Trustees members. It would also allow for consistency and continuity in leadership regardless as to any transition in administration, and I ask our colleagues for their consideration in terms of supporting this legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. On the motion? Senator Panglinen, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the explanation given to the changes that are being proposed in the bill. And if I may just get some additional assurance, I guess, that the changes in the, that are being proposed is to the method of appointing the members of the Board of Trustees, that we now have a screening panel, basically, with this nominating council, who will screen applicants who may be interested in serving and providing service to our community as members of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees. The terms remain the same, the terms remain staggered, and the limitation that's being imposed by the change being proposed in this legislation is that now a governor cannot ask for courtesy resignations, and the members are not allowed to submit courtesy resignations. Now, if the governor wants to fire them, then he can fire them, or if the member wants to resign, then he can resign. But the term remains available for the member to continue should he desire to do so. And I guess the question I had was, what is the authority of the governor to fire somebody whose term remains, or there's a remaining service in the term that they were originally appointed to? And I guess, can the governor fire the board member outside and terminate the service early? Is there anything in the bill that defines when that person can be removed? We know that, you know, for example, we allow for removal of a board member for malfeasance, for cause, conviction of a crime, and things of that nature in other boards, and I was trying to quickly read through this, and I didn't see, maybe I just didn't get to the part of how a board member can be removed.
Page thirteen.
There we go.
Removal from office.
There we go. But the, so there it is, and as we say, it exists there, but can we restrict the governor now from firing somebody if this is not, if not under the conditions that allow for a board member to be removed? In other words, can the governor, again, it's the issue, is can the governor fire somebody under this statute? Because what we wanted to do was ensure that we provide continuity for the board members, take some of the politics out of it of changing horses in midstream because you have a change of administration, which we find is disruptive to the operations of some of the institutions. Most example, of course, the most prevalent is the example we give for Guam Community College and the University of Guam, and those were basically more issues of accreditation. And maybe now that our hospital is fully accredited, then, you know, this is more appropriate, that we protect the achievement of that designation by guarding zealously the independence of this board. So that's one thing, I don't know, there was a change in here, whether or not in the past, there was statute that allowed the governor to fire, and here, it's silent. So I'm not sure about that, and perhaps we can, the good author will just address that issue, whether or not it was existing statute and so forth. And secondly, you know, though, again, because I really did not have a chance to go back and compare what is being proposed here from the existing statute, I've read almost everything in here, and that, those are the major changes. There's no increase in power, there's no change in power, there's no change in restrictions that the, that board members may have with regards, with regards to dealing with the hospital. There was a section in here, for example, that restricted a board member from doing business with the hospital. In the past, that was placed in there because of the physician that is appointed to the hospital, that he can continue then to receive, for example, payments from the hospital for services he provides from the hospital. But what about as we moved towards providing criteria for service on this, and we get some of our individuals in our business community who provides, who may not provide direct personal service, but the organization they head may be a vendor at the hospital? Is there a restriction, is there any change in that restriction from allowing, let's say, a board member who heads a business, and that organization is a vendor for goods and services at the hospital? Is there any kind of restriction, or increased restriction from that in the past? And I, so those are the issues I wanted to kind of, to bring up, Madam Speaker, and, but certainly applaud the work of the author in here, in trying to ensure the independence and the continuity on this board, most especially after the most recent achievement by the hospital of the accreditation by the joint commission. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Senator Uggan, do you yield to the questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much for, the good senator, for bringing up those very legitimate concerns. I think when you take a look at the termination by the chief executive of any administration, he is absolutely right. It's silent in regards to the chief executive being able to terminate a board member. And, you know, Madam Speaker, I don't know if we want to move in a direction of inserting language so that in fact, we even reinforce the idea behind this. And one of the premises is to allow for continuity of service beyond any administration. And in this particular case, his concern with regards to that, I'm not, I haven't, I did not come across any provision that authorizes the chief executive to extract or to remove any of the board members. On the other issue with regards to restricting of doing business, it was the proposal, the provisions contained herein in this proposal, Madam Speaker, is similar to the existing statute, with the exception of the council, and with the exception of the continuity of services, service throughout the duration of the term of the Board of Trustees members. So whatever allowances have been provided to date under the existing statute, I anticipate has been legal all along, and would continue to allow for similar business arrangements should the need arrive. So I don't know if that is a direct response to his concern, but I think it heightens the issue about whether in fact, there's any restrictions, and I don't see any direct prohibition in terms of a sitting member on the board doing business. I'll give you a good example. Perhaps one of the members that is required here are members of the medical community. And he was absolutely right, the preceding speaker, about if a member of the medical community sits here, are there restrictions for that individual to be compensated by GMH? And we certainly don't want to impose any unnecessary burden or restriction for a physician or a professional who's sitting on the Board of Trustees to be restricted from providing direct service to our people in the form of healthcare as a result of working at GMH. So I don't know if that directly responds to his concerns, Madam Speaker, but I think it brings to the surface some of the issues that were brought up. Thank you very much.
Senator Panglinen, you're fine? Okay. On the motion, I have Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this legislation, and I want to applaud the author. This, I know firsthand of the tedious task, being able to put this together. In the last legislature, I had the discussions with the former chair, you know, and the good person that he was, Mr. Webb, in wanting to move the hospital forward, and it's all the process that the hospital is going through, not only its accreditation, but more so to ensure that the hospital continues to improve in its services and the management that it has. And so I can tell you that Mr. Webb and I, as well as other board members, were in discussion, and I applaud the chair, the good chair, as well as the author, for continuing that discussions, and then also ultimately leading to the completion of the work. You know, I remember there was a whole discussion that I had with Mr. Webb in the waning days of the twenty-ninth Guam Legislature, of some of the ways that, you know, there was that whole discussion as to what is the, exactly the meaning of semi-autonomous entity, and how, you know, that, that criteria, the definition actually, you know, put restriction in some of the things and the activities that the hospital wanted to do to improve not only its financial condition, but the services that they provide. And there was that whole discussion about moving towards the autonomy, of which I believe, I firmly believe that it should be, so that it basically, you know, for lack of a better term, takes the politics out of it, takes the politics out of the medicine, ensures that, that medicine is provided to the individuals properly, efficiently. And this, this legislation certainly proposes to, and will take that in that right, in that, in that direction. Therefore, you know, Madam Speaker, and I have asked the author, means, means sponsor of the legislation, and I'm going to ask now if to move to be, to be second sponsor to this legislation.
On the motion, Senator?
Just on that motion, Madam Speaker, I know that the good senator is proffering it, but it was my intent to be able to add him on, and I wanted to reinforce it primarily because the accreditation that was recently achieved by GMH was a concerted effort that goes back about four or five years ago, when in fact, the initiation of the entire process, inclusive of the previous legislature, inclusive of the existing finance chair, to be able to ensure and assure GMH that they were going to continue to receive the resources from the legislature. The legislature played a critical part in that process, and had, and the good senator having served as the prior health chair committee, or prior chair of the Health Committee of the legislature, I think it's, it's so noted, and I certainly reinforce and endorse the motion. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senators. On the motion, then, to place Senator Frank Blas as a second co-sponsor, without any objections, so ordered. I have Senator Palacios.
Thank you. Just a simple amendment, actually just a correction to on line, rather, page nine, line seventeen, and just to insert two consecutive years immediately preceding appointment to the council, so that I listened to the previous argument on that bill three one six, I think, and I think those are valid, that individual should at least be resident of Guam for at least, at least two years preceding, just immediately prior to the appointment.
So it would be to add the words, at least two consecutive years, immediately preceding appointment to the council?
Yes, so of course I pass out there.
Which means delete then the prior two.
Yes, yes.
So on the Palacios amendment, without any objections, and so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Next, I have Senator Taitegui.
Cezus Mossi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, there was a question asked, but I just want to clarify this with the author, if you would yield to a question.
Senator Uggan, do you yield to the question? State your question then first, and then?
Madam Speaker, the question is, if a member of the board is a practicing physician, and if he were to do some work at Guam Memorial Hospital, to do some work there, I mean, because of the contract, because he's on a board, I mean, does that still give him the authority to, to work at Guam Memorial Hospital as a practicing physician?
Senator Uggan, did you hear the question? I guess not. Senator Uggan, you're, do you yield to the question?
Okay.
In regards to that, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
By the way, it was not just the physicians, because you mentioned earlier about businesses, you know, not being able to be, if they had a business and they're a part of the board, but what if they themselves is a practicing physician and doing work at Guam Memorial Hospital? I just wanted to make sure and clarify that, that segment.
Senator, do you yield?
You know what's interesting, Madam Speaker, is I was just talking to, speaking to the good senator also from Baragada on this very same issue. The existing law authorizes an individual who is serving on the board to be able to receive compensation for goods and services provided to GMH up to a hundred thousand dollars. I was on the impression that that was retained in the existing law. But the answer in regards to that is that if you look at the provision, it allows for individuals to provide services, goods and services with the concurrence of the Board of Trustees members. So aside from that, that's my understanding, and that's my reading, that in fact, yes, it does provide for that service to GMH.
Okay, so with the concurrence, meaning that the other board members agree and allow it? Is that exactly what he's saying?
Senator Uggan, then, with the concurrent or allowance by the board?
Physicians are never, are not an issue in this case. I think it's clear in the proposal and in the existing law that physicians are permitted to provide professional medical services to GMH.
Okay.
Yes. It's other, other professions, such as a, such as a business individual, financier, because if you take a look at some of the requirements, Madam Speaker, and good senator, some of the requirements require a financial expert, some of the requirements require a nurse, in terms of sitting on the board, a prerequisite to membership. And in this particular case, the medical professionals are exempted, they're given that general allowance. If your question is, would businesses be permitted to be able to participate in business transactions with GMH, I'm looking through the existing language right now.
Okay. Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. While, while they're still looking over that part of the legislation, then I'm, I will, I will wait until that answer comes to get more of an explanation. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. While they're looking, I'll, I'll wait.
You're welcome, Senator Taitegui. On the motion, I have Senator Munia Barnes.
Cezus Mossi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of the bill as proffered by Madam Speaker, I stand in support of the bill as proffered by Senator, the good Senator from Jonah, and I just want to note that on line, on page four, line 21, each trustee shall be entitled to receive the sum of $50 for his or her attendance at any board meeting and not to exceed 200. I just think that with the recent amendments that we've done this term on some of the board memberships, on stipends, that it be raised to be equal to those other board members on other boards and commissions, and I'd like to raise it up to $100. And then.
On the motion to increase this stipend from $50 to $100, and then that means you need to.
I would raise that for the, on line two, page five, from 200 to 400.
To $400. On the motion, no objections, so ordered. O B, he's going to have to make sure they have money. Okay, any other speakers on the motion? Okay, we have an amendment, so we'll take a brief recess. Senator Esposito, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we suspend any further discussion on the second reading file and revert back to motions for the purposes of placing confirmation on the voting file.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
We've been in receipt of a committee report for Mr. Benny Panala, who's been appointed to the Department of Youth Affairs, and at this time, I move on behalf of the Committee on Youth that that nominee be placed in the voting file with that committee's recommendation to confirm.
Without any objections, so ordered.
I now make another, notwithstanding the House rules, motion, Madam Speaker, that we proceed to the voting file to dispose of all matters currently in the voting file.
We're on four bills. Specifically, four bills, yes.
Four bills on. Madam Speaker, can you please just mention those four bills?
The bills are 179, 418, 413, and 424. So, you should all have copies on your file.
And can we do Mr. Wilford Affleckui as well as Mr. Panala?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, we hold up on, maybe we did earlier. So, just the four bills, Madam Speaker.
Yes, just the four bills until next week.
And I believe Mr. Panala, because that may be time sensitive.
Yes. Yes. So, on that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. We're now in the voting file, and we are, the first bill on your folder is Bill Number 179-30. I'll ask the clerk to read.
Bill Number 179-30, C O R, substituted by the Committee on Education, Economic Development, Health, Human Services, and Judiciary, further substituted by the Committee on Rules and amended on the floor, introduced by B J F.
Augen, you have an amendment to proffer?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this amendment is a discussion on the need to clarify any potential conflict of interest of board members who, like I shared with members of this body and yourself, many of them are professional in nature in terms of being business professionals in the financial industry or nursing professionals. And in this case, I would like to propose an amendment, Madam Speaker, on page five to replace subsection D of the bill to read as follows. "No trustee shall be actively engaged in the selling of services or goods to the hospital without the express approval of the board of trustees. The form of approval shall be by the adoption of a board resolution confirming said approval." This restriction shall not apply to healthcare professionals who provide direct patient care services to the hospital. I also would like to note, Madam Speaker, that on the subsequent page, subsection E highlights that no trustee shall act when a conflict of interest occurs. I think it clarifies that, in fact, if there's any conflict, direct conflict of interest on any decision or action that needs to be taken by the board of trustees, that members have an obligation to be able to remove themselves, otherwise they will be subject to eventual removal by the board. So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the inclusion of this particular, or the replacement of subsection D on page five with the language that I have just proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Augen. On the amendment, the Augen amendment, anyone would like to speak on it? There being none, no objections, then so ordered. On the main motion, Senators, last chance to speak. Senator Augen, then you may close.
As we look at the proposed legislation, I think enough has been said about what it would provide in terms of consistency and continuity in leadership. And it's critical, especially in light of the recent accomplishment and achievement by the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority in accreditation for at least the next foreseeable three years. So, I ask our colleagues, I thank our colleagues for the amendments that have been proffered and the discussions and the exchanges, and I certainly request your consideration and your support. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Does this matter, Senator Augen, on the motion, then? On the motion to send Bill 386, third reading filed without an objection, so ordered. Okay, so we're going to take a brief recess.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the body, for the reconsideration of the decision of the body and the most recent legislation that was placed on the third reading, Bill number 386 dash 3-0. And then, just for the explanation for everyone here, I've had the opportunity to talk to a number of our senators, our colleagues, all of them, and share with them that apparently the version of the legislation that we were discussing did not have pages 24 to 29. So, the complete version was circulated, Madam Speaker, so I'd like to request that Bill number 386 dash 3-0, as amended and as adopted or as moved to third reading, that we reconsider the decision of the body and bring it back to second. Yes, yes. The copy in the committee report had it, but it was kind of...
But the extra copies that were distributed were at the missing page.
That's correct.
So, on that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Augen again.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Senators, for your consideration. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that the Bill number 386 dash 3-0, COR, as amended. How do we proceed with this? With all pages intact, inclusive of pages 24 to 29, that that particular version and with all the amendments intact also be placed into the reading, please, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, without any objections, then so ordered. Okay, so, we're going to take a brief recess to get the four bills that we'll be voting on this afternoon, and Sergeant Adams, please make sure that all of the members will be in the hall as well. The legislature's back in session. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we suspend any further discussion on the second reading file and revert back to motions for the purposes of placing confirmation on the voting file.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. We're in receipt of a, we've been in receipt of a committee report from Mr. Benny Panala, who's been appointed to the Department of Youth Affairs, and at this time, I move on behalf of the Committee on Youth that that nominee be placed in the voting file with that committee's recommendation to confirm.
Without any objections, so ordered.
I now, notwithstanding the House rules motion, Madam Speaker, that we proceed to the voting file to dispose of all matters currently in the voting file.
We're on four bills.
Four bills.
Specifically, four bills, yes.
Four bills on...
Four bills.
Madam Speaker, can you please just mention those four bills?
The bills are 179, 418, 413, and 424. So, you should all have copies on your file.
And can we do Mr. Wilford Afflecky as well as Mr. Panala?
Yes.
Oh, we'll hold off on, maybe we, no, we did earlier.
And we're holding...
So, just the four bills, Madam Speaker.
Yes, just the four bills until next week.
And I believe Mr. Panala, because that may be time sensitive.
Yes. So, on that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered. We're now in the voting file, and we are, the first bill on your folder is Bill number 179 dash 30. Can I ask the clerk to read?
Bill number 179 dash 30, COR, is substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health, Human Services, and Judiciary, further substituted by the Committee on Rules and amended on the floor, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, R.J. Respecho, T.R. Munia Barnes, F.F. Blas Jr., J.P. Guthertz, T.O. Tydegru. An act to add a new section, 15, 14th Article 5 of Chapter 1 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to obtaining a limited obligation loan to acquire, construct, and equip an educational cultural facility.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
179. 179.
Tom Ada. T.C. Ada.
Oh, I'm sorry, which senator?
Senator V.A. Ada. Senator Augen. Senator Blas. Senator Calvo. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respecho. Senator Tydegru. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes. Substitute Bill number 179 dash 30 received 15 yays. Substitute Bill 179 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 418 dash 30.
Bill number 418 dash 30, COR, is amended on the floor, introduced by Adofu B. Palacios, Senior. An act amend sections 85.10, 85.14, and 85.26 of Chapter 85, Title IX Guam Code Annotated, relative to the composition of members to the territorial parole board.
Roll call. Senator T.C. Ada. Senator V.A. Ada. Senator Augen. Senator Blas. Senator Calvo. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respecho. Senator Tydegru. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Senator V.A. Ada. Senator Blas. Senator Tydegru. Senator Pangolinan.
Bill number 418 dash 30 received nine yays, six nays. Bill number 418 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 413 dash 30.
Bill number 413 dash 30, COR, is substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health, Human Services, and Judiciary, and amended on the floor, introduced by J.T. Wampat, E.D.D., T.R. Munia Barnes, J.D. Espaldon, R.J. Respecho, B.J.F. Cruz, F.F. Blas, Jr. An act to add a new Chapter 58B to Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to the financing and construction of additional facilities for the expansion of the existing Okudu High School in northern Guam.
Roll call. Senator T.C. Ada. Senator V.A. Ada. Senator Augen. Senator Blas. Senator Calvo. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respecho. Senator Tydegru. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes. Substitute Bill number 413 received 15 yay votes. Substitute Bill number 413 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 424 dash 30.
Bill number 424 dash 30, COR, is substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by B.J. F. Cruz. An act to repeal and reenact Sections 3102 and 3103, to repeal Sections 3108, 3111, 3111.1, 3112, 3113, 3114, 3115, 3116, 3117, 3118, 3119, 3120, and 3124, and to add new Sections 3102.1, 3102.2, 3102.3, 3102.4, 3102.5, 3102.6, 3102.7, and 3103.1, all of Chapter 3 of Title 17 in the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the reorganization of the Guam Education Policy Board.
Roll call. Senator T.C. Ada. Senator V.A. Ada. Senator Augen. Senator Blas. Senator Calvo. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respecho. Senator Tydegru. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Tydegru. You forgot Blas. Oh, even Pangolinan? Oh, sorry. Senator Blas? Senator Pangolinan.
Substitute Bill number 424 received 14 yay votes and one no. Substitute Bill number 424 is duly passed by this body. On the matter of the appointment of Mr. Wilford G. Afflecky to serve as Director of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse... You want to, you don't want to do the other one? Oh, okay, I'm so sorry. Okay, so then, on the matter of the appointment, then, of Mr. Benny Panala to serve as Director of the Department of Youth Affairs, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Augen. Senator Blas. Senator Calvo. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respecho. Senator Tydegru. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes. On the appointment of Benny Panala to serve as Director of the Department of Youth Affairs, he received 15 yay votes. Mr. Benny Panala is duly confirmed by this body to be the Director of the Department of Youth Affairs. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I move to recess till 2:00 on Monday, to continue voting on those matters that are in the voting file, may I please ask Senator Guthertz to just remind our colleagues and the public about an event tomorrow that she's, her committee's co-sponsoring with the University of Guam?
Senator Guthertz, do you have an announcement?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Tomorrow, we have a little, a very brief seminar in our hearing room, which is jointly sponsored by the Committee on the Guam Military Build-Up and Homeland Security and the University of Guam Regents to commemorate the Operation New Life, Untold Stories 35 Years Later, of the movement of thousands and thousands of Vietnamese refugees from Vietnam to Guam at the end of the conflict between the United States and the North Vietnamese and the taking of Saigon. The ceremony is very significant, and the seminar is very significant because of the very significant role that the people of Guam played, really in rescuing thousands and thousands of folks from South Vietnam who were trying to escape potential retribution from the North Vietnamese because of their siding with the then-South Vietnamese government against the emerging communist regime in the north. The program tomorrow will have very important speakers. We have Professor Michael Clement from the University of Guam, who's going to present a very significant historical overview of our hosting of the Vietnamese refugees here. In addition, Congressman Madeline Bredalio will be speaking on recollections of the First Lady, and of course Congressman Bredalio was very instrumental in assisting the then-Governor Ricardo Bredalio in preparing and receiving the refugees and hosting them here on our island for a long period of time. The program is divided into three panels. The first panel talks about sharing our island hospitality, the government of Guam's role in Operation New Life, and will feature individuals who are very much actively involved in this initiative, including Joaquin Perez, Doctor Winnebago Santos, Florence Crowe. The second panel will focus on starting a new life, Guam's private sector involvement in Operation New Life. It will feature those folks from the private sector that assisted the government of Guam in meeting the needs of these refugees. This includes Carl Peterson, Bruce Cloppenberg, Robert Jones, and Joey Cepeda. And the last panel is entitled, with only 18 hours' advance notice, What Was the Military's Role on Guam in Operation New Life? And the speakers will include Mr. Peter Chamberlain, historian from Anderson Air Force Base, Robert Cruz, who is Assistant Chief of Parole Division at Department of Commerce, I'm sorry, Parks Division at Department of Commerce, and at the time, he was involved with the military during Operation New Life. We also have Marvin Mike Dodge, who was a commander of the United States Navy, retired, and at the time, he handled the planning for the military and assisted the government of Guam in Operation New Life on behalf of the Admiral. We're then going to have a very brief portion of the program called Personal Reflections from the Community, which will allow people in the community of Guam and the audience to come forward and just share some of their feelings and their experiences. We expect a very, very good participation tomorrow from Guam's Vietnamese community and others in the community that were very much supportive of assisting these folks that were in need. And I think we should be very proud of having this short program here in our hearing room because it is a statement that the people of Guam through many periods have given with great love and affection support to those in need. As you recall, we also hosted the Kurds as they had to leave Iraq to save their lives, and the Vietnamese, Operation New Life, was another example of how the people of Guam came to the rescue to assist people in need on behalf of our community and as a community in the Pacific flying the American flag. You are all invited. It'll probably take two hours, two and a half hours, the program. We will be serving Marienda, and I hope the people of Guam watching who would like to come and attend, we'd be very honored if they would come. It'll start at 8:45. So, come by tomorrow and meet some of our Vietnamese residents who were part of Operation New Life and hear and listen to the presentations from those that were there who could help us remember how wonderful the people of Guam were at this very important time of need. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthertz, for that information.
Thanks, so my motion to recess till 2:00 P.M. Monday.
We'll be in recess until 2:00 P.M. Monday afternoon.